February 21st, 2018 Business Meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in the audience to please silence your cellphones and electronic devices, and that includes me. Mine went off the last time. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just face the ballpark.
I know.
Can we sing Beautiful Ohio?
Mrs. Wagner, Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Present.
Ms. Bolton?
Here.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby? Mr. Messer?
Present.
Mr. Morosky?
Present.
Mr. Timmons?
Here.
President Jones?
Here. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting on February 12th, 2018, and the business meeting of February 12th, 2018.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved as presented. This morning's presentation, oh, I'm going to ask Superintendent Mitchell to introduce our speaker for today.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So this morning, we're going to offer a presentation to the board and to the public regarding the safety measures that we take in Cincinnati Public Schools. First of all, I think it's very important to say that our schools are safe. We take a lot of pride and a lot of time to make sure that our schools are safe, so much so that my granddaughter, who I'm raising, is in our district and attends one of our CPS schools. They are safe, and once you see our presentation, you'll understand how safe our schools are in terms of the wonderful work that our staff, they do on a daily basis to ensure the safety. So I'm going to ask our interim Chief Operating Officer, Bill Mooreing, to come forward.
Oops. Good morning.
Good morning.
The presentation, as the superintendent explained, review and update of what we have in our schools and what the Safety and Security Services Department supplies and handles. So, our, the Safety and Security Services is comprised of two administrators. One administrator is the supervisor of security, the other one is investigator and a training coordinator for the district of all of our safety trainings. We have four response teams, our mobile response teams stationed out of this building here, and they go to every school every day. And they also respond to any emergencies as they come up. They investigate any report of dangerous situations. They coordinate inspections of our safety systems, whether it's the access system, the entry system, the AEDs, the lobby guards. And we also have over 100 school-based security assistants. So, some schools have more, some schools have less. It's all based on the need of that individual school. But we have over 100 stationed throughout the district. We have different features throughout the district. We have walk-through metal detectors at every high school. We have over a thousand, 4,000 cameras throughout the district. To put that in perspective, before FMP, we had about 200. So, we also have, at every school, every building, including this building, we have a visitor login system. It's a bad system. It takes a picture, plus it registers and records all the information for that person as they enter our building. We have over 1,500 portable radios that we supply and maintain throughout the district. Each school has portable radios, and they are tuned, there's different, there's 16-channel. And the first one channel is for their little area, wherever they are. And there's a channel that can communicate throughout the district. So in case of emergencies, they can go district-wide communication. We have a safe entry system box at every school that allows our first responders access to the building. Also, every police officer has access to our building. We have, weather lockdown buttons activate, we can, at every office, there's a button they can push that activates the lockdown system. And what that does, it, it puts out a tone, everybody knows what that means, and it also locks all the outside doors. And then if they push the weather button, obviously, that's a different tone, and they know what to do then too, because of the drills they have, which I'll get into later. Also, recently, in the last few years, we have Marx radios in every school, and that's a countywide police communication radio. If you push that button, you're in communication with Station X, you're in communication with Homeland Security, and everybody throughout the county, all police agencies can hear that communication immediately. It's pretty awesome. We have school safety crisis plans. They're actually required by ODE code, and the state requires them through the Ohio Revised Code as well. But we have a ODE Authorized and Approved Plan that's over 100 pages long for every school, and we are up to date and compliant with all those plans. Our safety drills that we have in our schools, we have, it used to be we had 10 fire drills. Well, a few years ago, they changed the law where you only have to have six fire drills and you have four safety drills. So they're starting to lean the other way. Obviously, we have three tornado drills every year as well. Now, the ALICE is part of our lockdown, and that ALICE stands for Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, and Evacuate. We used to do a lockdown where you hunkered in place. You just got down, no matter what, that's what you did. ALICE program, which we started a few years ago, we adopted that with the, with the coordination with the Cincinnati Police Department, and we trained every school on lockdown, on the ALICE program. It allows you to have some, you, you can decide what you want to do. You can either lock down, which you lock down immediately, but then you're informed on what's going on. And if you can escape, you escape. If you, if you, you can confront the person as well. Part of the training is you, we use little foam balls or wiffle balls or something, but you attack, you attack the attacker. That's part of the, the counter. Or you can evacuate. So it gives you a little leverage, a little leeway on what you're allowed to do, which is different than what we used to do. And, and these, like I said, everything is, is required by the House Bill 178 and the Ohio Revised Code. We have emergency flip charts in every school, in every room, in every office. We, we update that every year, too, and it, it's a brief description of what you do on any one of those categories. We have, like I said, we have, we have our safe entry system in our, in our buildings. In order to get into a building, you have to go through the front entry system. You have to be authorized to come into the building. You have to be authorized then, at the secretary's desk, to be allowed to go out into the building or be escorted out into the building, depending on who you are and what you're doing and why you're there, obviously. Our school safety features include, every employee by law has a, either a FBI or a BCI background check, and those are maintained in HR. And every volunteer, contractor, or anybody that gets one of our badges has a local background check that we maintain that in our security office, and that has to be updated every year. Every employee, volunteer, contractor, consultant, or visitors to the lobby guard has a badge. So, anybody in our buildings, you should be able to recognize, and certain groups have different color badges. If you're blue, that means you're an employee. And then we have different colors for volunteers and contractors. The school, our safety features, we have a relocation site, which we're currently using at Jacob Center, and that's, that's maintained all year round as, as a site in case we have any emergency evacuation or, for whatever reason, we can't be in one of our schools, we relocate them to the Jacob Center. There's approximately 20 classroom office settings in that building. There are telephones, network, wireless camera system, secure entry, lobby guard, portable radios. We have all those things at that location. So, our goal is we don't lose any educational days. A few years ago, we had a flood at Riverview, and we lost two or three days because we weren't ready. We didn't have a site prepared. But since then, we established this site, and we keep it maintained. We keep it stocked with furniture and all those pieces of equipment. The safety training, which every employee is required to do online, it includes all the things listed, bullying, child abuse, dating, violence, general ethics, homeless students, youth suicides, bloodborne pathogen, ALICE training, FERPA, rules and regulations, and cybersecurity. Every, every employee is required to do that. It's mandatory. It's not optional, and we follow up to make sure they get it done. Our safety, what's sort of amazing is we were recognized a couple times for the security that we have in our schools. Like the superintendent said earlier, we, we have very safe schools, but we, we're constantly reviewing and trying to improve because things change. So we were recognized in the American School Board Journal a few years ago as Cincinnati Public Schools has 100% of the listed safety checkpoints. We were one of the only districts that I know of that had all 100% of these checkpoints completed. We were also recognized at one time by the Council of Great City Schools, actually twice, at the COO Conference. Our security people went there and presented what we have because when we do our KPIs, we, we, we were well ahead of everybody else. We were really amazingly, we had, we, to go back, we, we went to a lot of FEMA trainings years ago, and when we went there, they were from all over the country. And it was amazing because we had stuff that nobody else even dreamed about. When they talk about all the things they have in place, we already had them. As the superintendent said, part of FMP is, we spent a lot of money and we made our schools safe. That was part of the FMP plan. We also recently, as part of our, as I'll get into in a minute, our safety task force, we are incorporating the Stop the Bleed program through the Cincinnati Fire Department. And what they are going to do, they're going to supply training and supplies for every school. Right now, we have three schools signed up, and then they're going to gradually get all of our schools. So there'll be supplies and training on how you stop the bleed. Whether it's an emergency response to any first aid type, whether it's tourniquet, whether it's CPR, whether it's AED, whatever it may be, they're going to train us on how you handle it until the first responders can be, can get in there. It's pretty awesome. That was, it's a cooperation between the Fire Department and Interact for Health. So, it's, it's a pretty neat thing coming up. Our safety task force, which was, we, we, we established this in the beginning of the year. We've had a meeting, and our, our one meeting included our security folks, our administrators, our, some principals, the sheriff's office, the FBI, the, the Fire Department, Homeland Security. We had a really good group of people there, and we're going to follow that up with recommendations and increased security procedures going forward. So our fire prevention and safety, I mean, every school has, well, Fire Department is working with us to establish a smoke detector program for the community as well as the school. So they're identifying homes, and they're actually going to the, through our schools, they're identifying homes that don't have smoke detectors, and they're going to go there and install them, supply and install at those locations. Pretty cool. So we, we've allowed them to come into our schools and do surveys to find out where these could be used or needed, where they're needed. That's pretty much it, and I think my, my biggest point is, we are very proactive. We work hard to make sure we're up to date on all our safety features and programs, making sure what we have is operational, and that's not easy. You, you figure we have almost 5,000 cameras. There's always one or two out, so we have to stay on it. Whether it's metal detectors or radios or whatever, there's a constant maintenance of all these features, and we're working very hard to stay on top of it. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mooreing. Any board members have questions or comments? Mr. Messer?
Bill, I want to say thank you. As a new board member, after the act of domestic terrorism, couple of, has it been two weeks? I remember just thinking like, wow, this is happening now as a board member coming into a meeting, and I happened to be sitting next to the superintendent, and I just said, what are the kinds of things that we're doing? And I was blown away because she gave me a highlight of what you gave today, and that it wasn't because of this act, it had been going on for quite some time. And it's just very reassuring, especially as a parent who's going to be sending one of my babies into a building this fall. I don't care where that is. I think you, you want to be able to feel like that's a safe space, and I believe you have created a very safe space based on the presentation here today. So two questions I have in thinking through that specific instance, and I realize there have been countless numbers before the Parkside in Florida. But one thing that alarmed me was that that student acquired that gun legally. So is there a policy that is, or is there a way for us to somehow know if a child at CPS has legally acquired a firearm, and do we have record of that? And then in the training, there are lots of great trainings, but the one thing I didn't see in there was also training on how to identify students who have demonstrated characteristics or have displayed or publicly said things that would be concerning on how to then appropriately deal with that. And I believe that was, again, something I heard in the news reports. People and parents and, I'm sorry, teachers and students who said, oh, based on this, this, and this, I expected something like this to happen. So is there training in that area?
Well, we worked with the Cincinnati Police Youth Services Department on training for our security folks as far as identifying issues with students, or how we, how we identify, I should say. And also, we have a cyber reporting system. When certain key words pop up, we are notified if they involve our schools. We are notified by the Cincinnati Police Department, or I believe it's Homeland Security, one of the two, same thing, really. They're all, but as far as the identifying people that have legally obtained a firearm, I don't know that. I will have to check. I, that's interesting. I don't know that there is any such record that we, but actually, I'll check with the Cincinnati Police if there is a way to know that.
Mrs. Bolton?
Yeah. Thank you. I, I know that we're able to do this because of the generosity of the taxpayers, for sure. And so we're benefiting from that FMP. I think we also benefit by having you as a retired firefighter, and we have a retired police officer as chief of our security in this district, and I, I think that makes a world of difference. And I appreciated your leadership, and Ralph's particularly as well. We've got decades-long, Cincinnati's finest, in our buildings, and I value that immensely. My one physical concern always of security is one single point of entry, and that's something that only the kids can really help us with because that's an issue. But the other piece that makes us very different is that through our own staff of social workers and psychologists and wonderful teachers, the real preventive in any of this is always the relationship building in a school culture so that we don't grow our own violent children that come back. And I know that one of the things that we can be very proud of is that our staff assignments regarding our psychologists, regarding our social workers, and the training that our teachers get, but also as a partnership with MindPeace, I think it's possible to say that we have, between our folks and the MindPeace private and public sector folks, we have mental health services provided in every single one of our, what is it now, 60 buildings. And I don't, I know personally that no other district in the country, at least according to the National School Board Association, has that capacity. I do think, though, that we do have to figure out a way, and this, you all have heard me say this, we've got to work a way to get parents to sign consent forms, that that is their partnership with us for security. Because many times, they may not sign the consent form for our children to get the services that they need when they've been identified by either their peers or by the professionals that are teaching them. But I, I, I'm, I'm very proud of CPS on this matter, and, but I concentrate on that single point of entrance, and then also those consent forms, I think, would be critical.
If I may add, one thing I didn't mention, because it's really not what we have, but we do have it, we have SROs. We are very lucky to have the SROs that we have provided by the Cincinnati Police Department. The people, the SROs are stationed in all of our high schools, and they are not just police officers. They are role models, they're mentors, they're coaches, they're friends, and they work very well in our schools. And their goal is not to arrest children. It's to maintain the safe and secure learning environment that we have.
And if I might add, that is, that is decades-old, that our police officers-
We were so lucky to have that. As we go through the, through the country, they just can't believe that we have that.
Right. Okay. Ms. Bates, and then Mr. Timmons?
Yes, I have a couple of suggestions for the board where we can provide some leadership from our level. And one is that we all start wearing our badges. And if the administration can provide us with lanyards so that tonight we can start doing that. I know I was in, in a guided tour last week in one of our schools, and I was expected, but the staff didn't know who I was, you know? So I, and, and around our building, I know that people are in and out. I think it would be a, a good practice for our board to begin doing that, beginning with this evening, if that's the will of the board. Another is that we all consent voluntarily to local checks, because we're the only ones who have badges who haven't had any checks of any kind. And we're not required to by law, but I think if we voluntarily do that, that's, that's a show of leadership.
Can I ask you to clarify when you mean checks? You mean like FBI and BCI?
Well, the local, I think, is fine. I don't think we have to go as far as FBI or BCI, but we're volunteers, so do what our other volunteers do.
I wanted you to clarify for the audience as well.
Oh, yes, yes. So, and, and that would be, of course, something voluntary, but I would, I would suggest that that we do that as well. And another, I, as you, as you have appointed me as a representative to the Ohio School Boards Association Board of Trustees, we are meeting this Saturday morning in Columbus, and I was contacted by Randy Smith, the president, last night, and he was asking the trustees if we thought it would be beneficial to the districts in the state that we provide a statement of leadership on safety and with, with particular regard to the tragedy of, of February 14th. And I wanted to put that out to you so you could give me feedback, maybe think about it for a couple of days, you know, until Saturday, when I'll be at the meeting. And one suggestion he had was to make a statement to petition the media to not name the perpetrators of these crimes, because there's, there's some notion that these perpetrators do it for notoriety. And if that doesn't exist, if we could stop one shooting in Ohio by that, that might be one action that this board can take. I, he doesn't think it's a good idea we get into Second Amendment issues at this point because the state is so diverse, but if you could think of some ways. And also, I was, I was talking to him about, you know, the differences in violence, in gun violence in, with our students, you know? It's, it's in the suburb, we've seen the problems in the suburban districts with the mass shootings, but our students experience gun violence, I'd say on a weekly basis, if not more. And that is, you know, and, and even though it's one by one, cumulatively, it's more than we're seeing in the mass shootings, and, and I would like to include that in our statement as well. So please give me your feedback on that as well before my meeting on Saturday.
Mr. Timmons?
Yes. Students know students, and is there some type of student council, some type of group where you have students that can get information out? Because students will talk, you know, and they can sometime, you know, beat them before they get there, if that makes any sense. So my thing is this, I, I would like to see schools have some type of student council, some type of student group where, you know, they can be able to tell what's going on in the school. Because a lot of times, it can, it, it can be known, but it's not known, you know? So I was just, just thinking that each school, go ahead and get some type of student council.
Okay. Mr. Morosky?
Thank you so much, Bill, and Ralph, and all the awesome work that goes on every day, and Superintendent Mitchell and your leadership on making sure our kids are safe every single time they walk in our schools. I, I love that Ms. Bates brought up the OSBA piece, and I'd love to kick around some ideas before Saturday, because I think it is important that we take a pretty hard-line stance that we don't accept violence in our schools. And again, to echo Ms. Bates one more time, our kids do experiences too frequently, we all know this, that's why we all work so hard. I have, and I'll let the board know this, I have identified three bills in Columbus that make it easier to bring guns into schools. So like you said, you know, it's not, we don't want to take on the Second Amendment, that's not what we're here to do. But I do think it's incumbent upon us to take a stance, if the board would be willing to support my resolution when Ms. Bruckner's finished writing it, to take a stance in opposition to three specific bills, one that's already been passed, that make it easier to bring guns into schools, and those bills are 228, 233, and 201 in the House. Again, what they all have in common is that they make it easier for a gun to make its way into a school. So while we're not the federal government or state government, we do have the ability to take a stand for our kids. So again, thank you so much to Bill, Superintendent Mitchell, to Ralph, and everybody else.
Thank you. So, a last, did you have your hand up, Ms. Bolton?
Just in, in respects to Ms. Bates's suggestion, also probably part of that to communicate to the President of OSBA is that the proposed federal budget from the President cuts mental health services to schools and cuts, and doesn't cut, but, and then the bill to introduce more infrastructure nationwide, there is a capability and possibility, even according to Congressman Shabbat, that the infrastructure piece of that for schools could both be technology but also safety. And I think even the most conservative members of the House would be interested in, in that part of it.
Yes. I, I thank everybody for their comments because they're really right on point.
And again, I want to reiterate that Cincinnati Public Schools are, in fact, safe. I think, and I'm going to reiterate a couple of things that Ms. Bolton said. One about the single point of entry. And it's, it's, it's kind of funny, not funny, you know, in, in, in a literal sense, but I've gone on school visits, and I go to the door, and every single time I go, I forget that all the schools have a single point of entry. And it's kind of, I have to remember that, that there's only one point of access to get in. But my question is, what happens in the event of a crisis where people have to exit? How, you know, are there methods or mechanisms that they use if they're exiting from a crisis situation?
Every- Every exit door is, you can open it from the inside.
Okay.
That's by fire.
So they can't get in, but they can get out?
Correct.
All right.
They have panic bars on the inside that you can just push, and you get out.
Okay, thank you. And then, my other point that I'm reiterating, she took all of my comments, but-
Great minds.
Is around, I happen to be, I have been a mental health professional for 40 years. And I personally take offense to current administration's comments that lump all these problems into mental health. And so, the Second Amendment piece, and this is my personal comment, I think our politicians need to, lack of a better term, get off their asses and start doing the right thing by people.[653.16][653.16](APPLAUSE) And my work, the reason I've been in this business for 40 years, is because it's very rewarding to see people who struggle with mental health issues every day be ostracized. Now, I'm not saying that folks, these folks don't have mental health challenges, but the issue is not mental health. And so, that's my personal commentary, and I'm offended by current administration's stance on that. So, Mr. Mauring, thank you so much for what you do, and all our security people, you do a wonderful job. And I think that we are in a better place for that, for our children. Thanks.
Thank you.[699.32][699.32](APPLAUSE)
Announcement, does anyone have any kudos? We're going to have to get back into that, you know? We don't want to lose that legacy that Chris Nels had, and we have to help our new folks understand what that is. But I'm sure we will, I'm sure we will. Ms. Bates, are there any retirements to present? Yes?
Oh, I have a kudo.
Oh, you have a kudo? Okay.
Yeah, and this is, you know, somewhat personal. I was reached out to by a parent whose child is 13 and openly LGBT, and reported that they experienced some bullying. And I think the kudo is to our superintendent, who didn't just listen to the information, she physically called the parent. And the text I got from the parent, who's like, "You're never going to believe what happened." And I think this responsiveness of our leadership and what we promote as the culture that we expect our schools to create for our children, starts frankly at the top-down. And our superintendent showed not only did she care about that culture, but she cares about that child and that family, and reached out to that parent. And I got a nice text literally seconds ago, so thank you for that.
Yes.
Yes, I have one as well. This is on the athletics side. Taft basketball team, out of 12 players, 11 of them are on the honor roll.
Oh, wonderful.
So we want to give Coach McEnroe a lot of credit for that, because of the preparation he does with his kids, so.
Thank you, thank you. Ms. Bates?
I'll do, sorry.
I always get you mixed up, okay? Not that I intend to.
I would just second what Mr. Messer has said, from a standpoint of not necessarily that one example, which is critical, but the fact that this district, in the interest of transparency and doing what is required by law and policy, has published the first of the reports regarding by-site bullying charges and resolutions. And very frankly, you'd be hard-pressed to find very many school districts that are currently doing that. And it showed that there is a priority to it, and also that everybody's engaged in trying to resolve it. So I appreciate that very much.
Well, since everybody's, go ahead, Mr. Morosky.
Kudos.
Kudo.
I was going to give one kudo, and then I was reminded of another kudo, and they're both at the same school. So the first one's athletics, the Lady Gators, a Gamble Montessori basketball team, won the very first playoff game in school history. Which is a big deal, right? And also at Gamble, tonight, if you're not going to be with us at Taft High School, Gamble Montessori is leading their second in a series of, I believe it's five total conversations on race, and it's led by the students. And I went to the first one, and I would have been there tonight, but obviously I'll be with my colleagues at Taft. They're really, really important conversations, so double kudos. Gamble Montessori, doing good work.
Thank you. Okay. Any other kudos? Ms. Bates, any retirements?
No retirements.
Okay, thank you. We are now at the item on our agenda for hearing of the public. Each speaker has three minutes to speak, and Mrs. Wagner, who is sitting on the end here, will be our timekeeper. When the buzzer sounds, your three minutes are up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel items. When your name is called, please come down to the podium. We don't have any. I couldn't see you over there, okay? Okay. Well, thank you. But I did want to reiterate that there is a community forum tonight, since I'm following Mr. Morosky on that, and it's down at Taft High School at 6 o'clock. Okay. Mrs. Bates, would you please present the resolution for board consideration?
Yes, I have a resolution to enter into a property swap agreement with the City of Cincinnati for property located at 3630 Reading Road. I offer this resolution for adopted as printed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion and comments?
I'll speak to the resolution.
Yes.
I voted on the Cincinnati Recreation Commission part of this agreement yesterday. And what happened was, this is around, this is land that's adjacent to the Hirsch Rec Center. And they had, their attorneys had determined, even though we had been leasing the prop, no, yes, we had been leasing the property to them, that they needed to own the property to make the renovations that they planned to make. So Cincinnati Recreation Commission, or the City of Cincinnati, purchased land adjacent to the Rec Center on the other side, for $1,000 from the Port Authority, and that's what they're offering to us in the land swap. A little convoluted, but that makes things happen for Cincinnati Rec to proceed with the work of the renovation of this recreation center.
Thank you. Any other comments? Ms. Wagner, please call the room.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Aye.
Mr. Timmons?
Aye.
President Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Messer, would you please present the resolution for board consideration?
And I'm actually going to ask our treasurer to give a high-level overview of the legislation and how it would affect our funding.
Can we put the resolution on the floor first, and in discussion? She can do that.
Yeah, sorry.
That's okay.
Resolution opposing House Bill 343, property values, and House Bill 371, property tax.
Thank you. Ms. Wagner? Any discussion? Ms. Wagner?
Give me a second.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Wagner?
Yeah, so there's two House bills under consideration, and at the request of OSBA, the Ohio School Boards Association, we've created this resolution to join our voice to oppose these two bills. The first being, it would add an incredible amount of workload to us, as in one of those unfunded mandates, where we would have to notify individual taxpayers every time a property's coming up for consideration, evaluation changes. The second one being, that was House Bill 371, where the district has the potential to lose property tax revenues, and at the same time, it would put a bigger burden on our individual taxpayers to raise the same amount of money on our fixed-sum levies. And so, they would be harmful to both the districts and the taxpayers, and so we're joining our voice. The copy of this resolution will be sent to the Governor and the General Assembly, the State Board of Education, and the Superintendent of Public Instruction.
Okay, just to clarify, so this is a resolution to oppose?
That is correct.
Right?
Yes.
All righty. Questions, comments, other questions? Okay. Ms. Wagner, please call the room.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Aye.
Mr. Timmons?
Aye.
President Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky, would you please present the resolution for board consideration?
Yes, aye. We discussed in Policy Committee about amending some of the language in Board Policy 5111.01 regarding students experiencing homelessness. You have a red-line version in front of you. I present the resolution as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call the room.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Aye.
Mr. Timmons?
Aye.
President Jones?
Aye.
All the motions are approved. Oh, we haven't, we still have one more. Mrs. Bates? Two more, huh? Mrs. Bates, would you please present the resolution for board consideration?
Yes, I have a resolution amending Policy 8420.02, Calamity Days. I present this resolution for adoption as printed.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion? That's our, discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call the room.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Aye.
Mr. Timmons?
Aye.
President Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton, would you please present the resolution?
Thank you. A resolution authorizing the issuance of not-to-exceed $72 million school improvement refunding bonds, authorizing the execution of a bond purchase agreement appropriate for the sale of the securities, authorizing the execution of paying agent agreement, authorizing the execution of a certificate of award containing the final terms of the securities, authorizing this distribution of the official statement, and authorizing the execution of an escrow deposit agreement securing the refunded bonds. I move for passage.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, I think we should ask, people see the $72 million, they get a little nervous, but perhaps the treasurer can tell us why this is so fiscally responsible.
Yeah, so this is a very long-winded and fancy way of saying we're just going to refinance some debt, in order to save about $2 million of interest over the next several years. This debt was incurred to help fund or facilitate Master Plan, the billion-dollar plan. And as time goes on, we have opportunities with interest rates and the windows, small windows of callable bonds to refinance, so that's what all that means.
Okay. Mr. Messer?
Yeah, and I will say that we had great discussion at our Finance Committee meeting, most recently, which is getting a reputation for being one of the most fun committees at CPS. Numbers are fun. But it really is, I think, for people who are interested in school funding and school finance, it really was a great education, and our financial advisor was there, who really stepped us through what I thought was a very clear, dummy it down for somebody like me to understand just how the process worked, and then how we ultimately got to that $2 million of savings. So we will continue to have those presentations that work for the average person in our voting body, or in our constituent base, to be able to understand that we are being fiscally responsible for the funds and making decisions along the way.
Other comments? Ms. Wagner, please call the room.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Aye.
Mr. Timmons?
Aye.
President Jones?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Board Matters, and we have a couple of items that we have on the agenda now, because we need to move forward with both of these items, so we're bringing it to the full board for a brief discussion and next steps. So, as you know, January 8th, we kind of established, or it's not established yet, but we had been talking about forming a committee that we named Board and Community Strategic Planning. And it is still an emerging committee, because five people wanted to participate on, and as you know, by protocol and code, we cannot have five people. So the question is, how do we move forward with getting this committee established? We talked about the committee needing to decide its function and create a charter for that, but we need to, you know, we talked about, do two people want to sort of drop off of the committee? And that was not an idea that people wanted. People are very excited about this initiative. So I'm putting this conversation on the floor. If you have ideas or suggestions about how we move forward, we'll be welcome. Mr. Morosky?
Question for my identification, did a fifth person throw their name in there, or is it four?
Yes, Mr. Timmons.
Okay, Mr. Timmons, it's, okay.
Yeah. And so, just for background information, and we all, you know, we've had that conversation about the removal of the language of the public engagement, and what we did was incorporate that language within the committees, that people would work in public engagement. So there are areas of consideration, and, you know, one of our members had suggested that that be part of this group, to redefine public engagement. Again, there's a lot of work to do in defining what that committee would do. So, if we are going to move forward, we have a choice of either two people dropping off, or maintaining this as a full-board discussion. Yes, sir.
As you know, President Jones, I was pretty adamant about not pulling off of this. My new full-time job beginning in about a month, I don't know that I need to be on three committees. If it makes it easier, I'd be the first to say, "I'm good and focused on policy and student achievement." And then serving, obviously, in an advisory, helpful role with whoever's on the committee, and attending the committee meetings. So if that makes it easier, now there's four.
Okay. Other comments? Ms. Bolton?
I would prefer that Member Morosky not withdraw from it, and I would suggest that we have something that I think is appropriate, although it's out of protocol, which is that you have a committee, or a standing responsibility, or a standing charter that would allow free movement in and out of that committee, rather than necessarily limiting to three, or making it something that has to be a full-board effort. And I don't know if that's a task force, I don't know if that's a whatever, but I think it would be great to have all board members occasionally be a part of this. If we'll recall when we last rated ourselves, and there are at least three new people on the board, so you don't have any ownership of this particular thing, but we all determined that the major low grades we got, giving ourselves, was the lack of two things, a strategic plan, and a way to measure our success on that, and also district-wide engagement. So I think it's without question a need to establish this effort. I also know that the new ESSA national legislation, and the Ohio Form of ESSA, which has now been accepted, requires that the local education agents, agency, or whatever it's called, creates their own local ESSA plan, which is involving strategic planning and engagement. So I would like our lawyers to come up with something to call the darn thing, and make it be certainly something that members could go in and out of, but it will also, since it's long-range planning, the CFT contract requires that if any long-range planning by the district includes representatives from CFT, and I know that the ESSA piece requires that the community also be partly involved in membership. So it's bigger than a board committee.
Yes.
And so maybe if we could just come up with a new name, you know, or whatever, I think it would be, it'd be noticed, it'd be Sunshine Laws and what have you, so just a few thoughts.
Okay, so part of what I'm hearing, I hear you offering direction, but part of what I'm hearing also is a specific assignment. I mean, the-
Yes, to the attorneys.
Yes, to the attorneys, and we'll address that in assignments, but thank you, Ms. Bates.
Yes, and I want to bring up what I brought up initially when we had these discussions, because it seems like we're kind of reverting to our traditional way of organizing our work. My initial proposal for this committee task force, what have you, wasn't to organize it from the board level on down, but to go to the community and engage them, and talk to them about how we're going to do this work, since it involves everyone. So I would suggest reversing the hierarchy, and at first, doing engagement around the work of this committee, to see what's needed out in the committee, before we make those assumptions in committee.
Right. And I think most of us agree on that, that we start with going to the community.
Yep. Yeah, but you're talking about forming a committee. I'm saying, don't form the committee, period, until you go to the community. I'm saying, do away with the idea until we find out.
I got you. So that may be another assignment, right?
Well, no, we can't have both assignments. We can't have a committee and no committee, so.
My assignment was to come up with what it's going to be called, and if we look at ESA and you look at our needs and our own evaluation of ourselves, we obviously need to have some formal process of a strategic plan regarding a strategic plan for the district and a strategic plan for engagement. So I do, I don't want to, I don't want to think that the board is top-down as much as it is the community representative to at least get this work started, to be inclusive, or it's not going to get done because people have to run the district. And this is, we always defer the strategic planning because we've got so many other things to do. And fortunately, we have a superintendent now that's really kind of into strategic thinking, so that's kind of cool, and we have a treasurer that's like that. So I'm a little, I don't like that top-down, no, no, no. But I do think that you want board priority, and I think it should be a whole-board effort, but I'd want it to not be a committee.
Okay, I hear that. Mr. Messer?
My personal opinion only is that being intimately involved in this type of work in my professional life is that if you don't have two people or sometimes one person identified as the process driver who wakes up every day and says, I owe this to my peers or constituents or whoever to lead this work or in this group, this board and all the people that we serve, I think it does get sidelined. And if it is officially established as a committee and is officially then charged with developing the process, because even in my day job, it is a bottoms-up approach. We start with the local-level teams to craft then what the overarching strategic plan would be, but it has to fit within a framework. You know, I think there are probably lots of examples that we could benchmark where we could say, here are the major buckets of work and the major items in a strategic plan that we would want to ensure that our work was inclusive of, and then our process will be to engage all the stakeholder groups, including our students, our administration, our faculty, community members, et cetera, through that process. My hesitation with the, I want to make sure that as many people are involved, and I'm happy to step aside if that gets us to a three. I do have a little passion around, I think it's fun work, but I do believe it needs to be a committee who is waking up every day and then throughout the year, laying out a work plan that's been clearly defined in a charter so that we can plan the work because there are significant numbers of people who will need to be engaged in various components of it. And perhaps after that group scopes the work and creates the major pillars that would construct the strategic plan, that we identify smaller subgroups who would then do the deep-dive work under each of the major categories.
Yes, I think what we're missing is that framework that you described, because I think people, I hear some commonalities, but I'm not hearing exactly how we move forward. So, and I can remember when we started the work of the board assessment and evaluation, we, it was assigned to us to establish a framework for how we operate. So I would suggest, and the first step in that framework is to first ask our legal department to look at how we form. That's just a suggestion, so, yes, ma'am.
I would agree with that, and I, well, I sort of remembered, I thought, in policy committee and then prior to policy committee, coming up with some sort of a charter for that committee was assigned to policy.
Was it?
Yeah, and Policy actually talked about it this last month, so if, to begin with, having the attorneys help us with that, because they are the ones assigned to that committee, at least that could be a starting point to initiate a framework as to what this could be or what it's envisioned to be.
So who would establish the framework? Policy Committee?
At least to start with, the attorneys.
The attorneys, okay.
I mean, working together, because they need to know what's the, you know, what's the moving energy. So if that is okay with the Policy Chair, our guru, guru, is it okay?
It's fine.
There you go.
So, okay, well, we'll get to that in assignments, okay. Any other conversation then about that topic, and so we can, Mr. Morosky?
I think, I just want to echo Ryan, and I think it's important that this does have a structure and that somebody is driving it, and then whoever that person is driving it, then to go back to Ms. Bates, that person, then one of the priorities is to bring the community, but I think this has to start somewhere, and I think this is probably the appropriate place for it to start.
I agree. Okay. All righty, so we'll wait on assignments for getting us moving on this one. Okay, so the next item on Board Matters is related to communication, and Ms. Bates and I had a lovely conversation about that, and there were kind of some pressing issues that I think drove this conversation. So, Ms. Bates, would you like to kind of capture that for us?
Yes, yes, Ms. Jones, and Ms. Jones was very gracious one afternoon and listened to me vent because I had, I've becoming increasingly frustrated regarding the changes in the way this board communicates and communicates with each other. And, I mean, I don't think it's the fault of the board. We have new board members, so it's, that's kind of, you know, a natural evolution. We also have a new Director of Engagement and Communication who, you know, wasn't always aware of how we've done business before, and as a result, you know, there've been, like, there was one event where it wasn't on my calendar, I don't know if it was on anyone else's, and Ms. Bolton attended and was called upon to speak and didn't even know she was going to be speaking. I mean, things like that are occurring. So I wanted to bring this up, kind of talk about how we've done it in years past, not saying that that's the best way, because we have a new board and a new Director of Engagement and Communication, but to at least have the board discuss ways that we want to receive information and know what one another is doing so we can support one another, you know, represent the board. We all don't have to be at every event, but board, the board should be aware of every event, and we should be able to delegate that to whoever, you know, it's most, you know, that's what they're most close to or it's appropriate. So I'm not naming specifics because I don't want to point fingers, I just know that the issue is communication with the administration and to the board and amongst board members regarding the work of the board.
Yes, and there are two, in our conversation, there were two specific things that I think also presented some challenges. One, for me, is the amount of emails, and I think it's easy to lose the information when you've got tons of emails going back and forth. So that's an area of concern for me. The other concern is that Phyllis, Ms. Davis over here, is she works hard to try to do her best to, and she does a great job, but getting the information out and especially around coordination of activities and events that, or meetings. And one of the things that I've noticed in, as she issues out the doodles, is that oftentimes people don't respond to the doodles. So you may miss a meeting if you've been doodled and you don't respond, okay? Mrs. Bates let me know that her doodle doesn't work.
The link doesn't work.
The link doesn't work. So those are the kinds of things that if we're going to use Doodle, then it's crucial that we all use Doodle and respond to the Doodle. We need to get the links fixed and what have you so that she just has to issue one. And there have been times when people haven't responded to critical Doodle requests, and I've had to call her and say, call these people. Well, that's another layer that is problematic, because she doesn't want to trouble anybody at work or wherever, so that is a concern. So I think what we're saying, number one, is we have to bring some consistency to how we communicate. My experience is that, like the notice that you missed, I got that in the mail, I got that in my packet, and it's very possible that you could have been missed or whatever, but typically the information is in the packet or it's on the calendar, is that correct? On the calendar, and sometimes an email. So, you know, you know, it's not really an assignment, it's more of making us aware of kind of what works for us. So I'm open, any conversations or discussion about that would be great. Mr. Messer?
Thank you. I think this is a good topic, and maybe we, I don't know if this is, if you don't have a committee, but maybe you could get a couple of people together who are passionate about this and come up with some suggestions. You know, I think no matter what organization, if it's a board like this or your day job or an organization that you're involved in, somehow, some way, you've got to settle into some team norms. And I know of at least a couple of great examples of communication norm documents that teams have put together after a day of how do we work effectively as a team, and something like that may be a very good place to start. Some basic things on limiting replies to all and those types of things, but then small things of if it takes more than two reply emails, have a live conversation with someone because you see this kind of spinning activity. Up into then how you coordinate team events and that type of thing through a master calendar, something that would work for everyone, you know, regardless of if you're on Gmail or Outlook or whatever. So maybe it's something that we pick a couple of people who are interested in this, come to the next meeting with some potential recommendations that I think would help streamline our work for sure.
It sounds like you've talked yourself into an assignment. Okay, all right. Any other conversation?
I would strongly suggest that Ms. Davis and Ms. Bruckner be part of this committee.
Be part of that, absolutely.
In years past, I used to joke, kind of half-joke, and say that I would tell my kids, if they wanted to find me, call the board office, because they always know where I am because they manage my calendar, and this is something the board can consider. A few years ago, all the board members were trained on Google Calendar, and some people, like I put everything on there, some people keep a Google Board Calendar in their personal calendar, but a retraining on Google Calendar and having all board members have access to that might be really, really helpful, because I just, you know me, I just don't look at a lot of this paper. I, you know, go to SharePoint or my Google Calendar, and that's, you know, I go here, if it's not here, I don't go. The other thing, and this, I know that we've discussed this too, that I know Ms. Worley makes all the board members aware of all the events, but usually the response I've seen is to respond to you, and I think it would be better if we responded to Phyllis and Pat, or you, or Ms. Worley go to Phyllis and Pat and get the word out. Something more uniform so that, you know, we know, somebody centrally knows what's going on, and I think that's most appropriately placed with our office and, you know, not burden Ms. Worley's office.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Bolton.
Real quickly, most of whatever we have confusion about is our, I believe, our invites and events, and that's going to come from the administration, sharing whatever they know is happening, where they, everything that they know that is happening, where it might be reasonable to have board representation. They need to just send it through to our office so that our office can give that invitation to all seven, if indeed the administration doesn't do it themselves, just work it through Pat and Phyllis, I think is a reasonable way to go. Also, any invites that come from the office or come through the office, because we get those from probably organizations, and they're usually a president behind, they're usually, you know, it takes a while for them to figure out who's the officer or who isn't by this point in time. And I think anything that comes to the board office, even if it's only addressed to the president or just one of us because of our interests, it should be shared because we need to do it. And I know I've watched Mr. Morosky be sure to share where there are interesting things happening that perhaps we'd be invited to or stop by. So, I mean, those three areas together, if we can be very well aware that whatever comes our way via which of those three avenues gets shared with everyone. And I do think, and maybe this is an assignment to a certain extent with the president, there are certain things where there needs to be board representation, and there has not been. And part of it is we're all waiting for either the president, the vice president to do it, or whatever, so you reach a point that you almost have to start saying, who can cover this? And years before, we would do that. We would say, who can cover it? And for the administration's sake, whenever there is a board member present, acknowledge that board member's presence, even if they're sitting. I know our superintendent does a great job of that, so, because it's important for the public to see the board paying attention.
Yes, and I also think, I agree with you on that point, and there should be representation, and it's all about awareness. If I know, we can do it. So, but I think having Phyllis and Pat be a part of that conversation is helpful because they know the process real well, and Ms. Worley. So I'm going to assign that when we get to assignments.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So does that, I think that kind of resolves what, for this particular agenda item. Okay, Superintendent Mitchell?
I'm sorry? I was going to say, more specifically, I know that one issue that Ms. Bolton brought up to me in another conversation was press conferences, and in particular, and the way it's been handled in the past is that the board president would be asked to speak, but all board members would be notified and invited, but, and if the president couldn't make it, she would assign another board member to speak, but a press conference that involves the board in some way, all board members should be welcome, not obligated, but welcome, and not find out about it when it's on the news.
Or invited.
And I have a question, and this relates to the protocol. Anybody will, you know, when we have media coverage, generally, you know, media will ask anybody on the board for a response, but, and this is just me asking the question, refresh my memory, Ms. Policy Guru, about how that's handled when we're addressing an issue. The president is the spokesperson typically?
It depends. If it's a policy issue, it's usually the Policy Chair, finance issue, the Finance Chair. If it's an issue that the board has reached agreement on. Now, if it's, you know, should children be wearing uniforms across the district? You know, the board doesn't have a position on that. Any board member can say, well, as Melanie Bates, I don't think that should be the case. But if it's an official stand of the board, it could be the president, or what we've done in practice in the past is delegate it to the chair.
Right, and I ask that question specifically because, as an example, you know, the issues around FC Cincinnati, that it's, you know, we've had people appear on some of the news, you know, they ask people to speak, and we have to be very conscientious about what we're saying to the press in the terms of having differences of opinions or not a unified response. So I just think we have to be more careful about when we engage, not saying we shouldn't, but when we engage with the media, what our message is, because the board is supposed to have a unified message. As individuals, you are allowed to respond, to my knowledge, but, you know, you would need to have a disclaimer from what I understand. Ms. Bolton?
I think that's right. I think, and we've had this conversation, so I won't be too, you know, too much on saying everything again, but over the last few years, we have centralized a little much where I'm not even sure the community knows who the board is, that, and I think part of it's been to control messaging. It's easier to give it to one board member so you're not worried about what we're all going to be saying, so I got that. But throughout the years... But throughout the years, the board is unified after it makes a decision.
Yes.
When it's trying to make a decision, it seems to me the public has a right to have some idea of the texture and the diversity that the board may have individually, as long as the individual board member keeps saying, listen, we have to act as one body. When it rises to the, only the president can speak, it's usually about a superintendent search. I think, in part, the FCC might rise to that occasion, to that level, in the next couple of weeks. But on other things, over the years, at least the 11 years I've served, if it's a policy thing, it goes to that group, or this group, or what have you. And board members should feel that they are able to represent the constituents and speak, because the president, after all, is one of seven. And that's, I wanted to add one more thing about our staff, our board staff. It would be so helpful if the administration, anytime they communicate, and I think mostly you do, anytime you communicate with us, unless it's very, whatever, individually or together, please CC Ms. Davis and Mrs. Bruckner, because they're the ones that are figuring out what we're supposed to be doing.
Right. They are a strong foundation for us, and I just want to take the opportunity to really thank them for the work, because it's hard to work for seven people.
It's, yeah.
And all with varying needs and desires and everything. So thank you for the work that you do. Yes. Did I, did I see other? Mr. Murawski, and then Mr. Messer.
To piggyback off Ms. Bolton, I don't think it's any secret, I have a number of friends in the media, and people contact me a lot for things, and I don't always take the bait. But after talking with Ms. Bolton a lot, right after I got sworn in, consulting with Ms. Worley, my stance has been, if someone contacts, particularly about something that's controversial, that's current, like FCC, I would just say, if you just want facts about a meeting that we're going to have later tonight at Taft, fine. And I always give the caveat, not speaking on behalf of the board. If it's an ideological, opinion-based thing, like racism in schools, I got no problem going on the radio and saying, Cincinnati Public Schools does an awesome job in combating that. We have policies in place, and we don't stand for that sort of thing. But again, my mantra's consistently been, not speaking on behalf of the board, and if it is something that hasn't been decided, just fact-based, here's what's going on, you can look at public record, and that's sort of been a guiding motive to me, for whatever that's worth.
Mr. Messer.
Yeah, I think there always has to be the disclaimer, that you're hearing from one board member, and of course, whatever the topic or question is, would be a group decision. But I think, let's be clear, with 13 people who ran a very public campaign, there's a heightened awareness now of who's on the board. And I think, you know, where it may have been an effort to streamline and only kind of tightly control, what we heard was, people aren't transparent. And even the media would say, look, we've asked board members, and they're saying they can't talk. And so I think there's the balance of, I can't talk, and I can only speak my opinion? Of course, we don't have all the facts, or of course, it's a group decision, and all those things have to be kind of carefully put in there. But I think, you know, the public will, at some point, they elected us, and they're going to want to know that, what's our opinion, that we will be taking into a meeting, et cetera.
Yes. I think, and I don't want to blame either, but in my tenure here, and it's based on what I believed, or how I interpreted the policy and the protocol around that, I've only been asked, even in this seat, you know, it's usually coordinated through Lauren when I speak publicly, but I've only been asked one time. And that one time that I was asked, we had already made the decision that the president would speak on it. So I said, I directed them to the president. I, you know, for me, and this is personal, I mean, I really do think we have to work hard, and I think we can still be transparent, as long as the message is unified. I think the media, not criticizing, but they're going to go to the people they know will talk. And so I think that, I think we're all in agreement, that we just need to be aware, and good discussion around what is a legitimate reason that you talk to the media and talk to the public? And as long as you're presenting the unified message, we're good, you know? And so, and I felt like I had to say that, because, you know, even in all of this stuff with F.C. Cincinnati, the contact that I've had was board business and things like that, but even that, you know, I haven't been contacted a lot, other than what has been organized for, yeah, for us, in press conferences.
Yeah, and I think just, this is great discussion, because, you know, we heard a lot of that discussion on this topic over the past year. The thing that I would say is, we have to be okay that we may not always agree on things. And there may not always be a unified message. And, you know, we have to be sensitive.
As long as you're disloyal.
On speaking about what's germane, and what's within protocol, and all those types of things. But I think, as elected officials, whether it's city council, or a school board, or county commission, there are going to be things where they ask your opinion, and you're going to say, this is solely my opinion, I don't speak on behalf of the board, but here are some of the things that I have questions about, that maybe aren't the same things that others, they could care less about those things. But I believe the people who elected me would ask me about those types of things. So I don't know that we will always be fully aligned 100% of the time, but we will, you know, I think, always be able to be respectful to the process.
Ms. Bates?
Yes, I've heard this happen with other elected bodies. I haven't heard it from the school board for quite a while, but the new board members may or may not be aware of this, but sometimes, public officials who oppose a certain ordinance or law may speak out afterwards, when it passes. And that's considered an ethics breach. We can say whatever we want before, you know, but as soon as the board votes, that's the will of the board. And I just wanted to, not that we've done it, but I've seen it happen with other bodies.
Ms. Bolton?
I would second that. We are different as a body, that once it's decided, it's decided, regardless of your views, even if you're in the minority position on something. So, but leading up to it, you can have a diversity of opinion. If we didn't have a diversity of opinion leading up to it, the opinion's not, the combined corporate opinion is not going to be very good. It's going to be flat, and not have the kind of sake to it. But I would also say that one of the other guideposts that one can use, is if, whether it's the press, or whether it's mostly people that ask me stuff, you know, whether you see them in Krogers, or whatever, it's perfectly all right to relay what has already been said in public. Because it's happened, and there's nothing secret about it, and I know we lived through that with the Clifton issues, where, hey, we're having public meetings, we're not telling you anything new, or different, or secret. This occurred, either in committee, this was said, or in the whole group, it was said. So if you limit what you're saying to what has been discussed in public, you're fine. And of course, nobody can say anything about executive session.
Mr. Murawski, last comment.
And that's kind of, thank you, that's kind of what I was alluding to regarding particularly this FCC stuff, because not everyone's watching our livestream. Not everybody's going to our website. And so, when a radio station member said, hey, would you talk about FCC, I say, only if you want to know what everybody and their brother and sister can find out with a couple clicks, because I'd be happy for the folks who don't want to take the time to do that, to say, here is what has been said in a presentation. So, to your point, that's sort of been like a guiding motive as well. And then again, when something's done, it's done. That's a different story. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. So let's move on. Superintendent Mitchell, do you have a report?
I would just like to highlight the fact that our students at Dater High School, on this coming Friday, the 23rd, at 8:30, will be involved in a panel discussion with some local legislators at 8:30.
Wonderful.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the revised recommendations of the, or report of the superintendent?
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay. Mrs. Wagner, just call and roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Murawski?
Aye.
Mr. Timmons?
Aye.
President Jones?
Aye.
There is no Treasury report?
No, that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Inquiries and updates, the following updates that we need to address are, I have two, and open the floor for any others that we might, that the group might have. Just a board retreat follow-up. You, I might make an assignment for Ms. Bates, even though she's not on the committee. We need to follow up the recommendations of the board retreat, and Phyllis is going to prepare that, so that we can at least take a look at it. I don't know if it's possible, maybe, to put it up on paper, and put it on the wall, and have people respond to that. I'm open to suggestions about how this committee, how the board wants to do that. And it is those goals, priorities, that we established when we had our retreat, and we want an opportunity for folks to respond to that, and then talk about what our next steps are. And we have to do this pretty quickly, or the year will go by, and we haven't done what we said we were going to do. So, open for discussion about next steps, or what you want to see. It's going to take a little time, so we probably want to put it on an agenda where we're not going to have tons of other stuff to do. Get your hand up.
Yes, the timeframe of that is, and this is partly an update, so that'll be taken care of. The superintendent has met with the Student Achievement Committee, and shared her scorecard, so to speak, and indeed, was, is going to be presenting that to the full board, I believe, on the Monday night, on Monday night. So, because it went, got through Student Achievement with flying colors, and with some adjustments here or there. And then after she presents that, then, you know, there'll be a bit of a progress report that will go to each board member, to kind of tally up where we think we are. But the reason I'm saying that, we'll meet our March 1st deadline, for all intents and purposes, which is important to stay on calendar. But upon that completion, those five, or six, or seven target, or priorities, or whatever we were calling them, then have to go to the superintendent, so she can build the next piece of her effort and the evaluation. So it is a very tight timeframe, it would have to certainly be done, I'm a history teacher, but certainly by the Ides of March, which is the 15th of March. But I think that would be helpful, and she's anticipating us having that. We only started writing Ways to Measure, but right now, she just probably needs to know those five, six, or seven, worded properly.
Right.
To give her a clue to move on.
Right. And I think the preliminary step to that is that we all need to respond to the priorities, because I know particularly around preschool expansion, there was some, you all had some suggestions about that. So we want to make sure that everybody takes a look. So, given what we're saying, are we able to just eyeball them on the 26th? Is that too soon? Or do you want them ahead of time, like in our?
Yeah, we can eyeball them, because she doesn't have to do anything with them, but that, I think, would be a good way to initiate it. And very frankly, the proper wording of what the goals were probably rests with Marson, because I'm not sure that any of us kept as, how shall I say, diligent notes, as did the president of Marson, who facilitated that discussion. Looking back on my notes, anyway, and the handouts we started with, we ended up a little differently, when we, because we added one, if I recall, we merged two or three of them. So I think, if you could reach out to her to get what those were, then, we could eyeball them on the 26th.
Ms. Davis? Did we get that material that, Ms. Darwish, did she leave that material with you, from the retreat?
She did.
Okay. We'll follow up, and that'll be an assignment. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions about the retreat follow-up? Okay. The board meeting at school site is, that's, we have a meeting on March 12th, and I believe a meeting or so ago, we were in agreement that we would go to West Side?
Head west.
Westwood?
No, head west, but I think it was Westwood, because
Westwood?
We've got a Homer over there.
Okay.
Former principal.
Okay. So that's what our plan will be, is to go there on March 12th?
Okay.
All right.
Cool.
Okay. Any, oh, any other inquiries and updates? Reminder of ACES meeting on the 27th? Yes, sir. Give me, give me one second.
Okay.
ACES meeting on the 27th. Ms. Mitchell, you had asked me about administration's involvement. I'll have to, I'll give the agenda to you, and maybe we can have a conversation about that, either today or tomorrow. Is that okay? Okay. Thanks. Mr. Murawski?
I just have one announcement, and it is kind of related to the communication conversation we just had, interestingly enough. So we had all received an email from the good folks at an organization called Cake Communities and Kids Empowerment. They're based out in New Prospect Baptist Church, and they're looking to secure grant Robert Wood Johnson Foundation regarding kids' health, particularly young kids, and Rose Lawn, and Carthage specifically. And they chose those two communities because they're sort of outliers, city-wise. So I responded to Phyllis, and said, I would like to take them up on meeting their offer. And I met with them this morning for like 30 minutes, they're really awesome, nice people. And I just wanted to relay that that email, just, I promised them that during announcements, I would remind everyone that, everybody got that email, if you want to meet up with them. Their goal is to have all of us, and I said, well, I can't speak for everybody else, but I'd love to be a part of it, so I'm like, you know, now, in March, to have like an event at New Prospect, maybe, where parents in these communities that don't feel like they have the time or resources to always get to our meetings, they want to meet us, and they're kind of going through these two nice ladies. So that's my announcement, it's in your email. They're good folks. Of course, when the March date comes up, I'll let everybody know, as always. So, that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Will you keep us informed? I mean, I'm not quite sure if I understood, there's going to be another meeting?
They want to have a meeting in March, where we would be invited to go and just hear from parents. Parents have questions, they gave me a little list of questions parents have. They covered all kinds of things.
Let us know.
Yeah.
Keep us informed. Thanks. Okay. So we're at assignments? Do we have assignments? Ms. Bolton first, Ms. Bates?
I'm assigned to our attorneys to help the policy committee begin to develop a structure for the planning and strategic planning and engagement organization. I forget what to call it.
Okay. Ms. Bates?
Yes, I want to preface this with a rationale. As we all have been reading with great interest, the situation with the SORDA board, that there's been, the council did not approve one of the mayor's appointments, and also that they're going through a CBC audit. And I actually spoke with Ms. Mitchell about this, so she's aware I'm going to make this assignment, that we make the assignment to the administration first, to determine, through our legal counsel, if Cincinnati Public Schools can have a seat on the SORDA board. We are, we do contract with them, but they are looking for users. So I think, and also, you know, preschool promise, we're a provider, and we have several people on the board. So first, to, assigned to legal counsel, to determine the legality of Cincinnati Public having a seat on the SORDA board. Number two, having Ms. Mitchell identify an individual, and to be on the SORDA board, not only because we are probably one of their largest users, but we are the second-largest transportation system in the county. And we've been through CBC audits, and I believe that we can help the SORDA board a great deal in their processes, by providing our expertise, and also having a seat at the table, because, you know, of the great need we have of their services and expansion. And, you know, they're talking about putting a levy on the ballot, and part of that could be because we need between $15 and $100 million for buses for early start times, or late start times for high schools, there's a myriad of issues. So you get that. So those are my two assignments to the administration, with the consensus of the board.
Thank you. Ms. Bolton?
I know that the superintendent, being proactive, is already on this, but I think it also needs to put on behalf of the community. it also needs, on behalf of the community, needs to be an assignment that the board, if, I know we all agree, make sure that the administration is doing all due diligence and planning regarding the possible protests and national movement regarding the violence that has been taking place in our schools and on our streets. And I think it would be very important to have periodic report back so that we can tell our constituents that indeed we are on top of it. Yesterday at the Urban Network, there were about, I think about 14 school districts represented, and every single one of them was trying to figure out how to approach this in a meaningful way, in a unified way. And I would, I'd have one caution, I don't necessarily want to open our campuses to people that are not supposed to be on the campus when we, if we do engage in this protest. And advocacy is really what we should call it.
Thank you. And then I have an assignment, and actually, I'm going to switch it a little bit. I'm actually going to assign to Lauren Worley to work with Mr. Messer and our staff around the communication piece, and come up with some recommendations for full board, when that's appropriate. Any other assignments? Okay.
There's food.
There's food. There's food.
God, I'm starving.
Having no other, we didn't, I didn't know it was there. Having no other business, I declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you. That's what you call responsive. We're coming to see you soon. Are you?
I have a landing.